So, good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, I will call your name. Please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy?
Here.
Leslie Matthews?
Here.
Mary Stone? Excuse me, Woody Knight, Associate Member. Staff, when I call your name? Martha Taylor?
Here.
Emily Noble?
Here.
Also, anticipated speakers, anticipated speakers for our agenda. Also, please respond. Bob Grasso?
Here.
Stephen Sawyer or Mark Griffin?
By the way.
Mark Griffin?
Here.
Great. Paul Avery?
Steve Sawyer is here, too.
Great. Steve Sawyer, thank you. Paul Avery?
I'm here.
Great, thank you. Okay. Good evening. This is an open meeting for the Newbury Planning Board. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Insuing public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow for public comment at the appropriate times. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening via video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the Planning Board's page on the town's website. The agenda identifies how the public may join. This agenda can also be accessed from the website's homepage by clicking on the box that says "Agendas" at the top of the news box. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as a Zoom meeting and that some of the attendees will be participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care as not to screen share your computer unless you are required to do so by me. Anything that you broadcast, anything that you broadcast may be captioned by the recording. I believe that all the board members were, received all of the materials prior to our meeting. Applicants or representatives may be called upon to speak or share information to the screen. This is around to, we are turning, we will be turning to our agenda. Before we do so, please permit me to cover some of the grounds so that we can business effectively. I, the Chair, will introduce the speakers on the agenda. After the speakers conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members on the board, inviting each to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until called. If you need to, you can use earbuds. Tablets are, please remember to speak clearly so that we can generate accurate minutes. So, we have decided as a board that we will be unmuted, so all of our board can speak when necessary, as opposed to being muted and unmuted. Let's see. I know for the public, after the board members have spoken, the Chair will afford the public the ability to comment. And I think the way, the best way to do that is we'll ask that you post a comment in our chat section. Now, keep in mind that our chat section will be a general chat. Everybody will be able to visualize it. And I will ask for any questions and you can notify in the chat section. Martha will then unmute the microphone so that you can address your question. You'll be asked to indicate your name, your address, what your question will be. What else?
Does everybody know how to open that chat?
No, the chat can be opened by scrolling to the bottom of your screen. Thank you, Susan. And in the middle of the screen, there, to the right, will be a chat little icon. You can click on that and that'll pop the chat up to the right side of your screen. I believe if you're using a laptop. I'm not sure how it would appear on a Kindle or a tablet or a phone. So, I don't know how that will occur. And Larry will make sure that I do each vote by roll call. Right, Larry?
Okay.
Yes, okay. If for any reason I have to step away from the meeting, Larry will take over with the meeting. Okay. With that said, I'll be able to do some screen sharing when it comes time to review documents if we have to review documents or plans. So, please bear with me if I get a little cumbersome in doing that process, but that should go out without a problem. Okay, so Martha, we're good with our introductory remarks to start our agenda?
I think so. Susan, is there anything we missed?
Nope, I think you covered it well.
Perfect, great. Well, I had a beautiful script. Thank you very much, Martha. Okay, Susan, here we go.
Susan's script, my modifications.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate the script.
No worries.
All right, so, since we've called our meeting order, our first agenda item is a request for withdrawal by Mark Griffin, a request to withdraw preliminary subdivision plan for 105 High Road submitted on the 19th of February 2020.
Okay, I'm going to unmute Mark. I don't know if he wants to say anything about it. I'll put it on speaker view.
Sure. This is basically, we filed the preliminary plan back in February. The intent of that plan was to freeze the zoning on that parcel. We subsequently found out after filing that we neglected to file the notice with the town clerk. It's our opinion that, you know, that makes that filing defective. Accordingly, we'd like to withdraw that plan at this meeting tonight and we intend to refile a preliminary plan for 105 later on the agenda. And we'd request a withdrawal without prejudice.
Great, thank you. All right. Is there, is there anyone, someone who would like to make a motion to withdraw this preliminary subdivision?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. Thank you, Martha.
Sure. To make a motion to, without prejudice, to...
Withdraw the application?
Withdraw the application at 105 High Road in Newbury.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Okay.
Is there a date for the next filing? It's being filed tonight. Okay, thank you.
That being the case, if there's no further discussion, I will do a roll call. Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Peter says yes. Thank you very much, everyone. That passes. Thank you. Appreciate you jumping on this call. Okay, then we're going to continue with our agenda. Next will be the parents and under appearances submissions will be Bob Grasso, Engineering Land Services LLC for a submission of an A&R plan for lot division at 45 Moody Street MAPR 40 Lot 15 Owner/ applicant, Richard J. Bordeaux and Pauline C. Bordeaux Irreconciliable Trust with Karen Alsby being the trustee. Would you like me to put this information up to screen share, Martha?
If you would like, I was going to put Bob on speaker view. Maybe he could.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you want to do it, if you want the info up or if you want Bob on speaker.
Hello. Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you, Bob.
Okay. For the record, my name is Bob Grasso from Engineering Land Services. This is an A&R plan regarding 45 Moody Street. What we're doing right now, it's an existing lot. It is zoned RAG and it has 5.2. Something happened here.
That was me. I apologize.
Okay.
That's me playing around here and I'm going to stop the share. I apologize.
Okay, ready?
Trying to pull up the information.
The existing lot consists of 5.7 acres. We're breaking it into two lots. Lot A, which is the primary lot, which has the existing dwelling on it. And Lot B would be a lot, would be 4.4 acres in the back lot. And that has no frontage and it's not considered a non-buildable lot. And it's to be combined with the rear lot, which is the Commonwealth of Mass located on 66 Forest Street. Lot A has the sufficient frontage of 132, whereas 125 is required. The area is 53,429, whereas 40,000 is required and the contiguous upland is 34,000, a little over 35,000, whereas 32,000 is required. This was, I've been working on this plan since 2016. The Mass Fishing Game went out and started doing their boundaries and believe it or not, this lot was taken in the 1959 taking when the United States of America gave it to the Division of Fishing Game. And so they have control over this lot. So, we had to go to a general court and petition to get the lot back from Fishing Game. And we went through the general court and this plan was in agreement to break it off the existing lot, the usable lot, which was along in the back, their septic system, the dwelling, the driveway, existing utilities. So, this was brought and voted on in 2020 of this year in January. It was adopted by the House of Representatives and a Senator. And then it was, the bill was passed and enacted by House of Representatives, one House of Representatives and a Senator, and then finally approved by Charlie Baker. This is signed. This plan is on record with the court. So, this is just a legal process that we're going through the town to get a Planning Board signature and recorded at the Registry of Deeds and with the court. This lot also has a protective restrictive covenant at the rear of the lot, basically for planting and protecting the lot line between the two parcels. And it's for just basically to protect the wildlife and a small standing water pond in the back where they wanted to protect that. And that's an agreement that this, this decision and the agreement covenant will be recorded with the plan and the decision from the general court.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Bob? And I think the materials were sent in an email yesterday. So, I did have an opportunity, hopefully, to download those files and take a look at those files. Does anyone have any questions for Bob regarding 45 Moody?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Would we like to endorse this plan?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, then a roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Now, Leslie?
Yes.
I think she may have stepped out.
Okay, then I would also vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity tonight. Thank you.
Great. Have a good night. All right. Next on our agenda?
Actually.
Public hearing. Yep, thank you very much, Martha.
Public hearing.
Great. It is 6:45 and we do have a public hearing regarding proposed zoning amendments submitted by the Citizens Petition for Change to Parker River Residential District. Martha, do you want to bring me up on some information on this?
See, well, we need to read the public notice.
Okay. Would you like to do that, Leslie?
I don't seem to have it in my notes.
Okay.
Okay, I've got it here if you'd like me to read it.
Thank you, Martha.
Okay. The Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, at 6:45 PM in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, now virtual, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, to consider changes to the code of the Town of Newbury, Chapter 97, zoning proposed by Citizens Petition as follows. One, to amend Article 6 Dimensional Regulations by adding a new provision setting the maximum finished area in the Parker River Residential District at 2,500 square feet. Two, to amend Article 2 Use Districts, Section 97-2B Subsection 97-2B-2B by deleting the current written description of the Parker River Residential District entirely and replacing it with a new written description to include an area encompassing all lots capable of frontage onto Cottage Road. Three, to amend Article 2 Use Districts, Section 97-2B-2B by revising the written description of the Parker River Residential District to extend the boundaries of the district. The text of these proposed amendments is on file with the town clerk and in the Planning Office, 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass, and may be inspected there during regular business hours, just as an aside there on the website, since town hall is closed. For more information, contact the town planner at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed zoning amendment should appear at the time and place designated above. Peter Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. It was published, this notice was published in the Daily News on March 17th and March 24th, 2020.
Thank you for reading that, Martha.
Welcome. Thank you.
Could you just bring the board up to date with this zoning amendment and recent correspondence?
Actually, I, so, do you want to have discussion about it? The original idea was to just continue it to a time certain.
We can continue it.
Since we weren't 100% sure, however, we do have, I know some...
Martha?
Yeah, interested people there, including Michelle, who was the sponsor of this. So, if you want to have discussion, then we could go ahead and do that. Because I see a number of people here who have submitted written comments.
I would, I'd favor having a discussion since we have participants that would like to discuss this. Sure. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Would you like to direct this to Michelle first, Martha?
Yes, and she was the sponsor. So, I'm going to put it on speaker view.
Hey, Michelle.
Hi, hello, folks. Interesting to see you this way. So, the, the big point that I, I need to say right up front is that I and the other signatories on these petitions, we went to great lengths to notify all of the property owners affected by these amendments to let them know what was going on, to get them copies of the amendments if they so choose, but to give them the gist of them. And we sought feedback from the neighborhood itself and the property owners themselves over, since the time that the petitions were originally submitted. And what we found in the neighborhood was that even though a considerable amount of the neighborhood was supportive of the amendments and did not see them as being adverse to their own properties, we had a few people who felt very, very strongly that these amendments were a violation to their property rights and that their displeasure and their feeling that they were losing control over their properties was severe enough that it will damage our ultimate goal in proposing the amendments in the first place, which was to maintain the, the community sense, the cohesion and the consistency of the neighborhood and that the possible benefits that we may get from passing the amendment, specifically the dimensional restriction, it outweighs the damage that may be done to the goodwill in the neighborhood. So, I have canvassed the entire group that was behind this, this motion and we have universal agreement that we would like to withdraw the petitions, especially the one with the dimensional restriction at 2,500 square feet. The other two don't really affect anything significant. There's not really a point to, I mean, I thought it would be nice to have all of the properties on Cottage Road included in the same district, but Martha pointed out to me that there were some procedural reasons for doing the district the way it was originally done and it might just complicate things to modify it. So, my, I have permission from all of the signatories that I have contacted to withdraw the petitions. And I have been talking to Martha about how to, what I have to do procedurally to do that. Do I have to submit a signed letter from six to 10 of these people or whatever it is I need to do to do that? So, we can continue to discuss it, but the original promoters of the motion are prepared to withdraw it for the sake of cohesion in the neighborhood.
Michelle, thank you very much for addressing the board and bringing us up to speed as to where we are with this particular item. Thank you. So, if I understand correctly, Martha, we might have a little homework to do on the backside of this. So, it would make, it would be appropriate to continue this?
Well, I have been in touch with town council and I just want to clarify with her exactly what the procedure is. So, I think, and for everybody's benefit, the selectmen did vote last night to postpone town meeting until June 9th. So, there is, there's, there is some time if you want to continue it or if the board, based on what the applicants have said, feels that we, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote no action or something. I'm not quite sure.
So, we need a little bit of direction from council, is what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial.
Okay.
If Larry, if Larry might have any, any suggestions regarding this.
Well, I think it's actually an open question, Martha. The, as to whether or not the sponsors of a petition can withdraw it and keep it from going on the warrant once it's filed and the signatures are certified. And it's really a question for town council.
Go ahead.
So, I was just going to say, in the alternative, if it has to stay on the warrant, then someone would have to move no action at town meeting.
Right. I was, when I was in touch with town council about this, I can't remember now if it was yesterday or the day before. I will, my understanding is that the petitioners can withdraw. I'm just not clear on what the mechanism is.
Which was my interpretation of the law as well. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I looked into it as well on the, on the state website and it wasn't clear how we submit the withdrawal.
Right. The impression I got actually was it, it could be a matter of submitting the original petition with less than 10 signatures on it and then it would be essentially deemed incomplete or deficient, so couldn't go on the warrant. But I'm, I'm still not quite clear on what the mechanism is.
Well, I think the petition's already been submitted, hasn't it?
Pardon me?
Hasn't the petition already been submitted and the signature certified?
It has been submitted and signature certified. So, what I don't know is whether submitting again with fewer than 10 signatures would override the original one. So, again, I need to, I just need to follow up further with, with town council. We exchanged a couple of emails, but I haven't actually spoken with her about what the mechanism would be.
Okay, that seems reasonable.
Then, since it looks, looks like we need a little bit more direction, rather than close this hearing, I think it'd be appropriate to continue the hearing. Once we have our input from council, we can then make our decision. And if we need to close the hearing and decide upon it, I think that would be appropriate action. Would that be your direction, too, Larry?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, the only other alternative would, would be to take a vote on it tonight. And I don't think we want to do that. I mean, we could, frankly, for a variety of reasons, I won't get into. I'm inclined to think that, that I would not support this. Well, in particular, the limitation on the finished area of a structure, it's highly questionable if you can do that through zoning. And then there, I think there might be some technical issues with the descriptions of the areas that they're adding into the Parker River District, Residential District. So, I mean, we have one or two options as far as I can see it. One is to continue the public hearing, which I think is a very reasonable thing to do. Not arguing against it. The only other option is to move it to a vote tonight and see if, if the, if the Planning Board votes disapproval, then it's at least off our plate. But, you know, that's probably the prudent thing to do is just continue the public hearing.
Okay. Other members of the board? Any feeling?
I'm not sure what the vote would be tonight.
Could you say that again, please, Mary?
What exactly would the vote tonight consist of? I think originally it would have been a vote to either recommend this to town meeting or not recommend. The board could also just keep it, keep it open and essentially table it and not take any action at all. Because we don't have the information that we need. Is that correct, Martha? Well, we just need to understand better. I need to understand better so I can advise you all on what the mechanism is for the petitioners to withdraw this petition, which, which Michelle has stated that they would like to do. And if it's withdrawn at this point, since the warrant was not voted on last night, it can still be done. If the warrant had been voted on and this, this item were on the warrant as approved by this one, I think it would be more complicated.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful if we did get the information from town council. Just play it safe to, that we're doing it the proper manner.
All right, then, that being, that being the case, then Martha, let's pick out a date that would be appropriate to continue. I think everyone's got a calendar. Maybe I could pop up a calendar on the screen, whatever people's comfort zone is here.
Calendars, I'm sure. All right, guys? Well, I was happy because they actually used the script and wrote.
Let's see. Listen now. We go. So, this is our current calendar where we're at. So, we're on the first of April. Oh, by the way, Happy April Fool's Day, everyone.
Well, thanks a million.
Right.
I think it's ironic that we're having our first.
Okay, so it looks like we're kind of filled up. Martha, you were kind of looking towards the, since business is going to be kind of buttoned up, I think, through until the month of, the first week in May, we have some dates maybe in May or June. What is your feeling?
Well, it, it, it should be no later than the May 6th meeting because the selectmen, assuming, assuming that we can open things up again, the selectman will be voting to approve the warrant on either the May 12th or May 19th. Tracy will need the language either by the 7th or the 14th.
Okay.
So, I would say the last, last, not that, not that the board's vote would affect the language at all because the petition is what it is. But I think the last time that it would be appropriate for the board to take action on this would be May 6th. However, the board could just continue the meeting and not, just keep it open and not take any action at all.
Why don't we move it to the 6th of May? Do you want to go for? Right now, our agenda is open unless you have something else that you think's going to be falling in that day?
Well, we're going to have to talk about the 68 Green Street as well. But I would imagine that probably any discussion on this will be very brief.
Okay, so, would you like to do it at 7 o'clock or 6:45?
It's really up to you all.
Okay, any feeling from the board members?
I have a lot of free time, so I'm good either way.
Okay.
Yeah, any time works for me.
Well, why don't we go for, right up on 7, and we'll start at 6:45. How's that sound, Martha?
That's fine.
Okay.
7:00, 7:00 PM on May 6th. So, we need a motion and a second and then a roll call vote.
Wonderful. So, I'm going to get rid of this nice calendar that we have up on the screen, just so I can get everybody back together. All righty. Would someone like to make a motion for a time date?
I'll move to, oh, go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Larry, that's good.
I was just going to say, I'd, I'd move to continue the public hearing until May 6th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do I have to appear at that meeting as well to reiterate what I said? Or is that now in a record of the, of this meeting so that it doesn't have to be restated or?
I think we're good.
Yeah, it's, it's in the record, so. It could, it could be reiterated at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, but I mean, but it doesn't have to be by me, you can.
Doesn't have to be by me, nothing.
Okay.
Sorry, Pete, you're okay with that, you're the chair.
Yep, yeah, that's okay, that's fine. So, roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Mary? Mary?
Yeah.
Wonderful, and Pete says yes. Wonderful, thank you very much. So we will continue that, okay. Going back to our appearances and submissions, next on the agenda, I believe if I have this correct, would be Steve Sawyer for submission of preliminary subdivision plan on 105 Higher Road, map R48, lot 49, owner applicant, DePiro LLC.
All right, I'm going to put Steve on speaker view and unmute.
Good evening, good evening, Steve Sawyer with Design Consulting. So basically, we're resubmitting 105, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we're resubmitting 105 Higher Road. I guess in discussions with Mark Griffin, our counsel, our counsel for the project, he felt it appropriate to resubmit. And along with this, the submission, I've submitted the paperwork for the clerk, clerk certification with this. So we feel it's in a, basically the same submission as what we submitted in, back in February, but along with the clerk notice.
Great, thank you.
Right, and we received the hard copies today, thank you, as well as electronic copies.
Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have a question about the submission? And if there is none, since we've already seen this presented once before, I'd entertain a motion to accept the submission.
I move to approve this submission.
Accept.
Wonderful. On the, on the motion, Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Wonderful, Leslie?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And Peter, yes. Wonderful, thank you very much, everyone. Our next item, agenda item is Stephen Sawyer for DCI submission of preliminary subdivision plan for 277 Higher Road, map R11, lot 70, owner applicant, DePiro LLC. Steven?
Good evening again. So basically, we're submitting a preliminary subdivision. I don't think, well, we really don't have an intent of doing it. The, the reason for it is just to protect ourselves with any upcoming zoning changes, which sounds as if maybe they might, some of those changes won't be going forward. So basically, it's a, we're taking a lot and off a cottage road, putting, basically installing a, or proposing a short road cul-de-sac and cutting the lot, the entire parcel of six, I think it's about 6.3 acres into, into two lots. It's fairly straightforward preliminary. Once again, it's most likely, well, we really don't have any intention. The, the purpose is to protect ourselves against any upcoming zoning, zoning changes at the, at the upcoming town meeting.
Thank you, Steve. I think everyone received materials and had an opportunity. Plans, are there any brief questions regarding this? Anyone on the board?
I don't.
Then I would accept the motion to accept the submission.
Remove.
Wonderful.
Second.
Wonderful, okay, discussion? Okay, then a roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Peter says yes. Wonderful, thank you very much, Steven.
Thank you.
I'm working on it, thank you. Okay, continuing our, our agenda, under old business, we have Borrego special permit modifications. And let's see. I think you had a draft for us, I think, in my paperwork.
I did.
Let me see if I can find. I think I can pop it up. Let me see if I can go to share screen. Here. And Borrego special permit decision. Had it opened up. And this was the draft, I think, that everyone had an opportunity to take a look at. And basically, our language is indicated and the decision is also noted. Any question on this draft that we have or any comments on this draft?
Seems to be pretty straightforward to me.
Okay, Martha has highlighted the question, are there any conditions that we want to place on this?
I don't, I don't see the need for any additional special conditions.
I agree with Larry.
And Mary, are you comfortable with that as well?
I am.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts?
But all the, other conditions of the original permit are, are still in force and effect.
Okay, okay.
I heard Peter ask. Yeah, I kind of agree with Larry that the screening's important.
All right, let me pop off this screen share so we can go back to our visual. So the draft looks pretty good, Martha. I don't think we need to put any conditions in there, at least that's not what I'm hearing from the board members.
The rest of the language seems all right.
It does, yeah. And I think everyone has been indicated they're comfortable with it. So I'm going to ask, is everyone comfortable to vote on this draft?
Yes.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, then, on the, on accepting the draft, would you like, in the form of a motion, Martha, would you just like to have us vote on the draft?
Well, no, I think you basically need to make, make a motion to approve the, or the request for the modification as laid out in, in the draft decision.
Great, what would I can do?
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful, any discussion? All in favor of the motion? So here we go, Larry?
Yes.
Very good, Leslie?
Yes.
Very good, Mary?
Yes.
And Peter says yes. I got the kick under the table, actually, that time from Martha. So that was a far reach to make sure that I did a roll call.
So I think, given the circumstances, getting signatures from all of you will be difficult, potentially. So another suggested vote would be to have you all vote to authorize Peter as chair to sign on behalf of the board. And what I'll do is modify the last page to list everybody who's voted in the affirmative and have a signature page for, for Pete. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes. Yes.
Larry, are you in agreement with that?
I am, that sounds very reasonable. In fact, I'll move, we authorize the chair to sign the decision on behalf of the board.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, then I guess on that, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Mary, how say you?
Yes.
All right, Peter says yes as well, and I believe that's good. Okay, great, Martha, are you, are you fine with that housekeeping?
Yes, I'm good with that. So what I will do is coordinate with you on, I'll finalize the, the draft with that change to the signature page and coordinate with you to get the signature and then file it with the clerk.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're not quite at 7:15, so we're actually ahead of our agenda, could that be true?
Amazing.
We could talk, I guess, a little bit about the governors, if that's comfortable with you, Martha?
Sure, I can unmute Paul and have him, and have him present.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Paul, so you have about five minutes and then we're going to have to interrupt you.
Okay, well, hopefully it won't take any longer than that. If I share screen, I can bring the plan up, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so let me do this. Let me know if you can see my plan here.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so zooming in, here's the layout for the French Student Center. And we've just made two changes. The first one is over here, as you can see, we've got this path that comes up that has to be serpentine for ADA compliance. And as they looked at it, one of the major donors requested that we save this tree. And previously, this path looped around and went right through the tree. So what we did was we swung the path out around to save the tree. Pretty simple stuff. We have a small, like, tree well in here, just because the grades are such that we just want to make sure that we don't pile up too much fill at the base of the tree and kill it by fill as opposed to cutting it down. So that was item one. Item two is there, is there an existing concrete retaining wall? It runs along the side of the driveway here, and there was a photograph I sent to Martha, and I think I could bring it up if you want. But we also have a wall that's like a teco block wall that's going in to, you know, hold the, hold the patio up. And it just decided with all the logistics here, they're only a few feet apart, that it made more sense to just take the concrete wall down and put a, a single integral teco block system that included not only the wall, the patio, but also the existing wall along the side of the driveway. So as a result of that, the patio actually gets a few feet longer just because it pushes out instead of having a gap between the two walls. I also included drawing C3, which is nothing but the associated grading for those layout changes that I just discussed.
Great, thank you, Paul. Does anyone have any questions to Paul about these two proposals? And the modification of the previously approved site plan?
I just understand it a little bit better. The concrete wall you want to take down is just a retaining wall in that, in that spot.
It is, do you want to see a photograph of it?
I have it.
Okay, yeah, so it's just a cast and placed concrete retaining wall that we'd, we'd like to take down because we're trying to do work right behind it and it just, it just doesn't make sense to try to keep it. So the, the wall that goes in is basically the same thing, only it's going to be an integral teco block wall and, and new one instead of the old one, but it does the same thing.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mary?
Paul, I'm just curious, as I live nearby, what, when, when there was a question of the tree being removed, was it arduous to come up with a plan to save it? And, or, or was it pretty much, you know, agreed upon quickly? Just curious.
This is actually how it came down, is this, is they, the, the academy asked me, said, hey, you know, can you come up with a plan that will save this tree? And so I said, okay, fine, and I, you know, just came up with it. And it's like, well, we've just got to go out farther and loop around. And in doing that, I did it up and it, it was, okay. And I didn't think it was going to go anywhere. And then we, the, the issue with the teco block wall came up and said, oh, yeah, the, the path and the wall. And I said, what do you mean about the path? Oh, we're doing the path. And I was like, well, yeah, we are doing the path, it's like, okay, fine. So, yeah, I mean, it, it wasn't a particularly difficult thing to do. It was just, you know, it was just a little bit more path than we needed. I mean, basically, the, the way we did it was they didn't make the path any longer than we had to to get it flat enough for ADA compliance. Ran it out a little bit further than that to save the tree.
Okay, I'm just going to interrupt for one sec, Mary, just to let the folks know that we do have a public hearing which is scheduled to start at 7:15. We will, we will continue with that, we will pick up that public hearing when we finish this discussion. Thanks, go ahead, Mary, thank you.
That's all, it was with a curiosity, we're going to see whether or not those who had wanted to save the tree were happy with the plan.
Yeah, I think they are.
Okay, great, thanks, that's it. What kind of, what kind of a tree is it?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that too.
Sure, I could probably find pictures of it. Tree species aren't my strong suit, so, I mean, yeah.
Oh, and how old is it, Paul?
I don't know that either.
Oh, can I?
I know.
So I, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure, go ahead, Martha, please.
Well, one question, one comment. Is there any, any change to stormwater management related to this change in the root of the path?
No, it, I mean, the grading, it all stays and drains the same way it did before. So we're not, we're not generating any new runoff patterns or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. And my second comment is it seems to make all the sense in the world to me to extend the patio down to that wall. So otherwise, you have what we used to call an architecture dead cat space. You know, this very small area between the patio wall and the retaining wall. But it seems to make a lot of sense to extend that.
Okay, I, I'd never heard that term before.
Neither.
I'll have to remember it.
It's kind of unfortunate term, but that's what we used at architecture school.
Very, very unfortunate.
Just popped into my head now, sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. So, Paul, anything else you want to show us on, for information screen wise?
Nope, should I stop, share?
If you don't have anything else, I think we could, thank you.
I don't.
Okay, then I, the question I have to the board is whether the board's feeling if this is a major modification or a minor modification. If it is a minor modification, we can just kind of deal with it tonight. If it is a major modification, we would have to have a public hearing. Larry?
I'd call these minor modifications.
I would say the same thing. Very minor.
I see absolutely no need for a public hearing on something so very well done and positive.
Okay, Woody?
Looks good to me, as a minor modification.
All right. All right, that being the case.
Do you want to motion to?
Yes.
To eliminate the dead cat space?
As I shuffled through my paper, I said, to eliminate that space. Okay, yes, go right ahead, please.
Oh, me?
Yes.
All right, I move to approve the requested minor modifications to the plan.
Second is a motion.
All right, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, I will do a roll call vote as requested, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Peter says yes. Very good. Wonderful, I think we've concluded with that piece of business. All right.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much, Paul, appreciate it. Thank you, have a good evening.
You too now. Okay, so we're going to go back to our 17, 7:15 public hearing, definitive subdivision plan for Farmview Lane, 68 Green Street, map R38, lot 21, owner applicant, 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva Jackman trustee. Okay, can we read the public notice?
If nobody else has it, I will.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room of the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., 01922, to consider the application of 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva Jackman trustee, for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, as shown on the drawings entitled, Plan of Land in Newbury, Mass., showing definitive subdivision of Farmview Lane at 68 Green Street, dated March 3rd, 2020, and prepared by Millennium Engineering, Inc. The proposed subdivision consists of three lots on approximately 15.1 acres of land located at 68 Green Street, assessment map R35, lot 21, owned by the 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva Jackman trustee. Copies of the plan and application are on file with the town clerk in the planning office, 12 Kentway, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass., and are available for review during. and are available for review during regular business hours. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the definitive subdivision plan application should appear at the time and place designated above. Peter Paco's chair, Newbury Planning Board. This was published in the Newbury Port Daily News, March 17th and March 24th, 2020. And I would like to note that the plans are, the application is available on the town's website. If you go to the planning board page and look over on the right, it says current projects and applications. And if you click on that, you'll find links to the plans and the supporting documents.
Wonderful. And thank you very much, Martha. And do I understand that there has been a request to continue this?
And there has been a request to continue this to the next possible planning board meeting. Do you want me to read the request?
That'd be great.
Okay, so this came in from Eva Jackman trustee of the 68 Green Street Realty Trust this morning. And it reads, Dear Martha, I would like a continuance of the public hearing on 68 Green Street definitive subdivision plan to the next possible planning board meeting. And again, this was largely in recognition of the fact that we're just getting up and running and it wasn't clear how much public participation we could actually get.
Wonderful. Okay, so first on the motion, the request, and to have an entertained motion to continue this. And I would probably like, before we have the motion, I'd like to have some dates to take a peek. Would you like me to pop the calendar back on the screen for folks, or do people have their own?
I lose you when you do that, but it's not important. If everybody else is cool, that's fine. I can get you back.
I'm very flexible. I don't need to go there. Martha, do you want to just kind of give us a direct peek as to what you think would be best? We're looking at the first week in.
So we could look at the first week in May. That would be the May 6th meeting. The one thing that the board should be mindful of unless the governor, unless the legislation, which is pending right now, gets passed. Since there was a preliminary plan submitted for this particular subdivision, the board has 90 days from the time it was submitted to take action. It was submitted on March 4th. So the 90 days would take us into June. So it might be necessary to request, if the legislation doesn't pass, it might be necessary to request an extension. If it does, then basically all deadlines are stayed until, I think, 30 days after the state of emergency is lifted. But this will also, just to add, I've been in contact with Chris York, the engineer from Millennium. And the hope would be that any issues that our peer review engineer, Joe Zawatka, has had will be addressed. It's already gone through one round of comments. So it may not be too difficult to actually get through the public hearing in a relatively reasonable timeframe.
Board members' feelings? Larry?
So Martha, then what would you think May 6th would be the appropriate date?
I would say, at that point, the, well, the current closure of the town offices is through May 1st. We obviously have no idea what's going to happen. But I think it would be appropriate to continue it to May 6th. If we need to request an extension of the timeframe for action, we could do that. And by then, I think everybody's doing really well tonight, but by then, I think we should be comfortable enough with all of this to be able to conduct the public hearing virtually if we need to, is my thought. I don't know what you guys think.
I agree. I totally agree.
This was, this actually turned out to be a little bit more comfortable than I had anticipated.
Okay, well, then, let's shoot for the 6th. I'd entertain a motion. Or just before we get to the motion, is there specific time do you think will be more comfortable in our schedule?
Well, we now have, we've got the citizens petition at 7:00 at night, so I would anticipate that that will not be very long. So I would say 7:15 should be reasonable, if that seems okay with you guys.
Did we have the petition for 6:45?
I have 7:00. I think I have 7:00.
No, I think the plan was to convene a meeting at 6:45 and take the public hearing at 7:00.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think 7:15 would be reasonable.
Okay.
If you all are comfortable with that.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the petition's request for continuance and continue the public hearing until May 6th at 7:15 p.m.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I will do a roll call. Thank you, Larry.
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes, and Peter says yes. Thank you very much. Wonderful. Okay, 7:25, we're at 7:27. I have a note somewhere about town planners' report. Okay, Martha?
So I'm not sure. I don't have a whole lot to report right now. I think a lot of time has been spent, you know, certainly on Susan's part, getting us set up to be able to conduct the meeting remotely. And she's done a Herculean job. And then trying to make this work. I'm really glad that people, both board members and members of the public, were able to join and participate. It seems like it worked pretty well. So for the foreseeable future, this is what we're going to be doing. A couple of things. We do have a public hearing scheduled for the 15th for the 108 Main Street definitive plan, definitive subdivision plan. And I've had some conversations with the applicant, John Colin Tony. I think he will be, he's eager to move forward on that if possible. I'm also expecting that we will be getting the application from Tony Google for the AL Prime gas station on Central Street. He's held off, but might want to submit that on the 15th.
And that'll be a special permit, Martha?
That's both. Both, both. It's a use that requires a special permit and also will require a site plan review. So I think that's it for the moment. We're all sort of trying to figure out how we're working in some combination of being in the office on our designated day and sometimes in addition to that, and working remotely from home. And if there are any issues that you're seeing at your end on how things are working, please let me know.
Do you want to just explain to the board and whoever's listening, how you are working remotely and within the office and what day?
Well, each department is scheduled one day to be in the office. My day is Fridays, along with Tracy. I've actually, I was in the office three days last week, and I've been in twice this week already. It just seems to, you know, seems to work that way. But I do have virtual connection from my computer at home into my computer at work. And I also get voicemails on my email, so I've been responding to those as they come in. Most people do communicate through email, but some do call. So I'm trying to keep things going as best as possible under the circumstances.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure.
So if this were to be a perfect world, short term, it would make sense, maybe, well, I want to ask you, does it make sense, and is it too difficult, or is it okay, to continue to do meetings to keep the wheels turning level, so that the town can continue to go ahead and get things done? Does it create more work for you guys in the Newbury town offices? Or is it a manageable situation? Because my preference would be, as a board member and a citizen of the town, that things go on as much as possible with the view to keeping our distance from everybody else and not spreading the virus. But it's always great to know that things can continue. But I wouldn't want anyone in their situation, or those who work at the town offices right now, to be put in any kind of jeopardy. So I guess my question is, is this okay to do it remotely? Do you feel that it does then expand the possibilities of productivity for the town and keep things moving ahead?
And I think that some combination of remote and in-office time is probably necessary. But I think, you know, it's been a transition over the last couple of weeks to go from dealing the way we normally do, which is a lot of interaction with each other. And for example, the tax bills just went out, and that required interface between the assessor's office and the treasurer's office. But they have gotten it done, you know, under this new situation. So everybody is working to keep all normal functions going to the greatest extent possible.
Right.
But it's taken a couple of weeks of transition, but I think we're all sort of getting into more of a rhythm now. And I'm glad that we've got one meeting under our belt. I think the next one will be a lot easier. And as I said, now that we know that we can have public participation, I think that as long as you all feel comfortable, we can probably, you know, start holding public hearings as they were scheduled, so that we don't get backed up on the other end. But Susan, I think I'd like to, just from your point of view, if, you know, how do you feel about things, how they're operating, or any issues that we may be having?
I mean, I think that I agree. Things are going pretty well now that we've had a couple of weeks to kind of get things in place, allow the employees to work remotely, have them comfortable with the telephone remote, the VPN-ing remote, and just the adjustment of working from home versus being in the office. So I think that's, you know, well on the road. And as far as time in the office, I think it makes sense. You've got to check, you know, physical mail. There's things, deposits that need to be made, payments, receipt of any other material, whether it be an application for zoning hearing or something like that. There's a need to be in the office and accept that material. But I think the tools that we have in place will help facilitate getting back to people in a timely manner. And this certainly allows that communication and meetings to move forward. And I do the zoning as well, so for us, we are going to try and move, obviously, all the April hearings to May. And we're much in a flux there, too, because we will have the 40B coming up in May. So that will be a little bit of a challenge if we had to do it via Zoom, frankly. Because there are a lot of butters for that, that are going to be very, very interested in that application.
Okay, so Susan, you and Martha, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. But also, do you guys feel safe in the environment in Kent Street? Are you okay with all that? Just, I'm sure it's fine, but I just want to ask your opinion.
I would say yes. We're maintaining our social distancing and we've got, you know, practices to follow in terms of wiping things down and being cautious with mail and packages that come in. Very strict about not allowing the public into the building. So I think that we've got protocols as good as they can be.
Sure.
You know, I think it's impossible. You know, it's impossible not to go in from time to time, because as Susan was saying, there's mail, there are materials that I need to do my work that I don't have here. But we're working it out.
How do you guys handle the mail, for instance?
It gets dropped in a box outside. Yeah, gloves on, gets dropped in a box by the mail. We still have deliveries coming in. We typically try to let it sit overnight before we divvy it up and distribute it with gloves on. They go in the mail slots, and they're usually sitting there until the person has their day in office to collect it. So there's usually still a period of time before somebody else is touching it.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, a lot of the other businesses in the office building are not working at all. So we don't have that crowding and running into each other in the ladies of the men's room, or hallways or all of that. So that makes it better as well.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Yes, and I just would like to say thank you, Susan, for putting Zoom together as quickly as you were able to and for your cooperation. Emily for taking notes tonight, and Martha for making all the pieces move and for keeping us on script and on track. You know, I think it will get easier as we continue down this path. But for now, you know, this is what we'll do, and we can kind of live in the world of virtual meetings for a little bit, because I think it's what we need to do. And I want to thank everyone else for participating and for testing and learning and being patient as we did that. Continue to do that. I don't think we have any.
You guys did a great job.
Okay, thanks. I don't think we have any liaison reports, because basically, we have not had any meetings. Am I correct in that, Martha?
Well, I'll just report a couple of things. The March MVPC meetings, the commissioners' meeting, the planners' meeting, were both canceled, but the intention for, is for them to hold a remote meeting, commissioners' meeting in April. So I think they are also getting online. I know they had a stormwater management meeting this morning with an illicit discharge detection and elimination training. So I think everybody's beginning to figure out how to work in this climate.
Right.
As I noted, the selectmen did postpone both the town meeting to June 9th and town election to June 16th.
Martha, just a quick, it's not important, but a curiosity again. Would it make sense for the local paper to understand that this, that the town is moving ahead with this format in some way? I don't know. It's premature, of course, now. It's not for you to answer, but I was just thinking that, you know, people should know that this is going on, that their town is working for them, and that you guys are doing what you're doing, which is really great.
Thanks. I don't know, Susan, you want to address that at all? Susan?
You know, the public information officer for this is Tracy, so between she and Mike, they're really the speakers for the town. So I know that there has been some communication with our representative at the Daily News, Jen Soli. And that's about all I can say as far as comment.
Okay, right. Well, might be something to just mention, maybe, to the public information officer, that I brought it up, or it was discussed?
Sure, absolutely.
It's very important that people know that things are continuing to go ahead and that their town is working on their behalf in ways that make sense and that are safe for them as well. I mean, I want to, you know, my neighbors want to know. So anybody else feel that way?
I agree.
Absolutely, Mary. Absolutely.
All right, just a thought. Anyway.
Wonderful. Any other business, new business we should discuss this evening?
Dinner.
I'm ahead of you guys on that.
Who's cooking?
Well, that being the case, since we'd have to do it very remotely, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Indeed, yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Peter says yes, too. Martha, you good with that?
I'm fine with that.
All right. Listen, thank you, everyone, very much. Appreciate it. Again, thank you, Sue. Thank you, Emily, and for all participants in the in the public arena. Thank you very much.